As you may recall, it inspired a good amount of discussion and the mayor recommended that we have one of the touches at a work session. To kind of continue that, because there are a few of those questions that we talked about at the first meeting were unresolved, and I'm sure there may be some more. So what I wanted to do is start by walking through all of the outstanding items. There were several questions posed at the May 26 meeting that were good questions, we couldn't answer on the spot. So we've gone back to the homework and I wanted to walk through those. And those relate to, in some instances, updates in the ordinance that is on the agenda for tonight's regular meeting. And to the inventory file that I emailed to members earlier this week. So I'll just kind of go in order of council members, and I figured I'd kind of address each set of questions. And maybe kind of pause for a follow-up discussion, it sure needs to be on the subject, you know, one by one. So the, just the way I have it organized here on the page, council member Riddles questions are first. So the outstanding ones that were asked, that we've had to follow up on. There was some discussion about the implication of residential sites and activities being placed on the inventory. And that being a kind of a confusing issue in that the way that some of the activities were described was sort of vague and broad. Included things like lawn watering and landscaping, and so there was not great clarity around what types of seemingly, you know, routine activities would be regulated. Versus which, you know, just regular everyday activities. And so, one of the things we did, because this came up in, I'm forgetting, there's at least one other council member that asked about this. Is some sort of lack of clarity about what specifically, what activities and businesses specifically are being regulated under this new program? And what's not. So a, really the only substantive modification we made to try to make that a little bit clearer in the ordinance is in, let's see, it is section. On the ordinance, on the attachment, this would be page, the change starts on page 11. And it is in section eight. Section eight begins on page nine of the attachment, and that, the specific passage that has been modified begins on page 11. So there are these, there's this list of activities that was in this chapter to begin with. This is the water quality chapter that regulates a lot of different, you know, things that are, you know, drive city operations. Like it was discharge detection and elimination. That pre-existing list or existing list that was in the chapter is in item B. And it just refers to BMPs that might be applied to business or residential activity in the event, you know, of a illicit discharge. So that's kind of what this is referring to. This is old language that isn't associated with what we're regulating under the new program. And that, by the way, is where the lawn watering, landscaping descriptions were contained. The confusing part of the way this ordinance was developed previously is that I think there wasn't a clear enough distinction about which activities were the ones placed on the source control inventory. And so that's the revision we've made to item C. It begins now, it says sites identified on the source control inventory. And continues, you know, to refer to, I mean, most of this is pre-existing text. But refers to the activities that are defined in the NPDES permit. And then has a separate list numbered one through 15. And these are the activities, the ones that are on page 12 of your attachment that are These are the businesses that conduct these activities in this list are the ones that are on the inventory. And I hope that's been made a little bit clearer by the explicit reference to the inventory, you know, that's been added here. I can pause there and
I was just going to suggest that, Andy, thank you so much. Colleagues, you have questions for Mr. Sylvia on this?
I'm still quite concerned about this being overly broad. When I saw we have 122 sites, I'm concerned about that too. So when I look at some of these categories, I don't see, some I see, oh yes, those should be in there. And then others, I am not sure. Well, first of all, none, some of them are not in our area, right? Like ambulatory healthcare services and hospitals, you know, just to glance at that. So I don't know why we would have activities that we don't even have in our area, but I guess they could come at some point in the future. And my other question is, I don't have a problem with the previous section that says, you know, if you do anything that might result in a prohibited discharge, you should apply best management practices. So I don't mind the previous section, but I will just say, just as a preview, I'm concerned we have too many sites. And too many activities regulated. So I'll wait to hear that presentation, but like, I just don't see all of these resulting in discharges or occurring in our city. So I'm going to want to engage in a discussion to see if we really have 122 sites that need to be regulated. That's for city ourselves, which is kind of stunning to me. So I await either education or conversation.
Yeah, absolutely. And I can clarify the source of these 15 activities. This language comes right out of the NPDES stormwater permit, so this wasn't
I see this
judgments, you know, city staff names, that we think these things are
These are standard language and we may or may not have these activities in our city. Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Yes, thanks. And to follow up on council member Bodie's point, so this language is coming from the state. To what extent would we have flexibility to amend any of these? Or do we just have to adopt all 15 of them to be in compliance with state policy?
My understanding, I skipped a second, I'm sorry, very rude of me. Paul Fent from Parametrics, our consultant, is here with me, sort of in the same kind of role that Aaron Ferguson was less around. More knowledgeable subject expert than I am. And anytime I feel myself waiting into territory where I could use some support, you know, he's here to kind of, yeah, set me straight. Provides something, so I'm going to take this opportunity to do something like that. I will say, here's my interpretation, and we'll see if Paul validates that. We have to do, we have to have at least these types of activities and businesses on our inventory. We could have more, but I don't think, I believe we would be non-compliant if we, say, made a judgment call and said, hey, you know, rental and leasing services doesn't have, we're not going to place that type of business on our inventory.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Is it fair statements or?
I think it's fair. I think that the permits are generally considered the minimum. And the college in there first stops you from doing more. And all the questions you could try to do less or a little bit less. And it's really straightforward to pick their list, and then you start with your list, and then you work from there.
So does that mean, say, Windermere is going to have that one of these plants?
There, so I'm not familiar offhand with whether they're on this list or
They, I can say with bid under rental, rental and leasing service.
So there is a, if that's the case, and they have a, they have a business registration that has a makes North American industrial classifications, their code associated with it that matches that activity, then yes, they'd be on the inventory. I will have some feedback also, by the way, about the development of the inventory, how the course validates. I wanted to, it speaks to another separate question that is tangential to this, and I think, you know, maybe encouraged by, but I'll try to rein myself in and not get too far off track.
And I just want to say, I'm not against the water quality, I'm against unnecessary regulation. And my very first job was on the NPDES program, my very first paid job. So I certainly think it's a good program. I just don't want to create overregulation on our community or burden some responsibilities on ourselves. So I'd like to try to be as shark-like focused as we can.
I think council member Riddle has been waiting. Council member.
Thank you, and thank you very much for adding in that extra language. I think it does clarify where this is being focused. We know what the headers are for these categories based off of the permit. Is there descriptive text that goes with that that tells us more about it? Or does it just go back to the code that's already assigned to that place of business?
I don't believe that there is, at least not in the permit. There is not in the permit, but in the codes language themselves, it can be more explicit language. But there's a pretty clear copy of those code language and what got into the permit. And then what gets put on to the business licenses or wherever they're, whenever they're assigned that code, that business type.
Okay. So that's all outside of our control, and that's assigned when they get their business license, and we're just reflecting that here in our inventory. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair French. I, Andy, thank you for the presentation and thank you for being here also. I'm somewhat in the camp of council member Bodie that I worry that overly burdensome regulations may, in fact, end some of the small businesses in Lake Forest Park, and that would be a sad thing to see. So I would wonder about things like repair and maintenance. Would that apply to your independent handyman that happens to live in Lake Forest Park who's got a business license? And does do repair and maintenance? I mean, would it go that far to that level of business?
I think I have to launch it to like the inventory development part, piece of this, because it really, really speaks to a lot of these questions. So these codes from the permit appendix A is defined. It really is a list that permittees use to identify where potentially pollutant generating activities are occurring. And it's a, my sense of it is it's a pretty broad brush characterization. And it enables you to do, to develop an inventory based on relatively low level of effort, like desktop type process. The real confirmation and validation of whether pollutant generating activity is occurring on these sites happens really during our initial inspections and our direct engagement with these businesses. So I'll just, as an example, council member Goldman had emailed me about one of these sites on our inventory that he knows, like has, if, like, there's a, there's a business owner identified at a site that he knows to have vacated that property. And that information may not have been, you know, made its way to the data source that inspired this inventory. But we will, we will confirm when we're out in the field, you know, reviewing what is actually happening on the site. And if it is, if it is not, if there's been some mischaracterization, you know, in that data source, which, by the way, I should also mention, this data is developed, the data sources we use, which were, you know, the process we use was consistent with what the Washington Stormwater Center recommends. You know, they lay a variety of sources you can use to identify which businesses have these match the descriptions in the permit. And a lot of that relies on business licensing and registration data where business owners self-report what mix code sounds right, you know, for their business. And maybe, yeah, there's bound to be some, I guess, where they pick the closest thing they can find, and they give the best judgment. And maybe that, maybe there's an error there, maybe there's there is room for what we see on the ground to diverge from what we found in the desktop review, which is what this inventory is based on. So there's, I, you know, I can't really predict what will occur when we go out and do these inspections. I don't want to, you know, set expectations one way or the next, but there's definitely the potential there for changes to happen. And it's, I just don't know what level of confidence to have yet in this list, because we haven't been to these sites yet and validated it. So this is what we're starting with. There will be some level of effort necessary to validate at least what's here. But there are more answers that are, you know, to be determined.
Let's move forward.
Thank you, Chair French, and thank you, Mr. Sylvia, for your great presentations so far. And I wanted to make a point about that inventory, because I was looking at it. And council member Bodie bringing up Windermere brought this to mind, which is it's listed under Educational Services, BCS, Historical Sites and Civil Institutions. And also Lake Forest Park Elementary probably seems to be there too. But Brookside isn't anywhere on it. So, yeah, I'm really glad you spoke that piece about doing some field checking, because I think there are definitely omissions and mischaracterizations in that list. So thanks.
That's an interesting, I hadn't noticed that myself, but, you know, yes. So we're there, let me see, before I move on to the next outstanding question.
Just ask one more clarifying question. So a business doesn't necessarily have to have a site of operation to be included in this requirement. They could be a place that has an address, but they don't actually do the work at the address. They may do the work all over, like a construction company or a handyman, right? Am I correct in figuring that?
So.
Colleagues, any other questions before we move on from section eight, I believe it was?
Yes, thanks. I just have a question on, would you anticipate that staff would go and visit each of the identified sites? And have you mapped out how long that might take to do that number of site visits? And if it is a facility, as council member Castle suggested, which is they don't do their business there. It's just a, you know, their business address, that they don't actually do the activity there, whether it's repair or construction. Then would we take those off our inventory?
So
So two questions, one is staffing, the other, you know, active activity versus just, you know, business.
Your first question, I'll be getting to it in just a moment, because it was one you asked, and I've done some research, Paul. And then the second one about the scenario of a, like my council member Castle described, where you have a, say, a administrative office that relates to one of these these 15 categories of business that doesn't actually have polluating activity on the site. I got to lean on Paul again here. Here's my, just the impression based on what I've learned so far is that if our determination is that that site has been mischaracterized by this mix code, like the, there is a business there, they are in the printing business, let's say, but it's their call centers or something. That would be grounds for removing that site from our inventory. If there are other grayer areas where you might have a site that, let's say, there are the chemical, petroleum, and coal, plastic, and rubber manufacturer. And it's true that that is happening on that site, but it's all within a closed facility. So that doesn't make contact with stormwater, doesn't warrant any stormwater pollution control BMPs. They, it's, we've been advised not to remove them from our inventory, because there could be that owner maintains that business on the site, and let's say moves some of that operation out from under this covered or, you know, climate control space that now you are in a situation where you have contact with stormwater. But if it really is that the desktop review said this type of activity is happening, and then we go check in at something entirely different, that is a, that's a reasonable instance where we would just take them off the inventory. Does that, does that sound like?
Yeah, if I can, if I, I think the way to think about this is that there's two steps in the process, and colleges lay down two steps. They have an inventory step, and then they have the inspection step. And so what we've recommended and what we'd like now is to try to keep the inventory step as meaningful, as close to what the college is asking, and as manageable as possible, so there's the least amount of work to do. Because otherwise, we could spend, like, find every business that could be attracted to this, you know, forever. So really looking at a process that we can describe, so it's legitimate, the college comes and asks a question about, you say, we created an inventory by this, and it would be a reasonable person could look at it and say, I think that was a reasonable way to do it. And then I think the desktop ways to do it with some confirmation with looking at it. So it's really, and then in the future, that'll be a lot easier to manage, because you kind of keep track. You have your first list, and you kind of work from there. And then the instructions in the permit say, work based on that list, this is the amount of activity you need to do, the 20%, you expect 100%. So I, that, I think it's really, they've set it up actually pretty well, and we hope that we follow through on that, to just manage the list separately and keep the list management as simple as possible, with the recognition that things could come and go based on either mostly on they've been mislabeled, or they're no longer there, or they don't exist. In some way that they should have not been on the list in the first place, manage it that way. Then the next step in the inspections, what we recommend is, is that you have a step where you have the ability to say, this is a no-contact site. And then they stay on the list, but you manage them, they're saying, they're no contact. And they go into a separate category, where you're basically done with them. You might go the next time, and the next time you have to inspect them and say, yes, they are still no contact. So we're really trying to make sure that to simplify this and keep some order in it, is to separate making the list from whether or not they're in contact with stormwater. And so manage the no contact within the inspection part.
That makes sense to me. Can I clarify? So we would, after checking, our inventory could be less than the number of sites we identified because of things like business address versus activity. So our 122 might shrink down once we take a look or contact people, et cetera. But I completely get the close activity, that makes perfect sense to me.
But I, yeah, we, again, clarify, we really recommend that that stays on the list, but gets processed on the outside, no contact, rather than going through the list and kind of deciding whether or not something
I completely agree with that, I would have to.
Thank you, Paul. Colleagues, any other questions before we leave? And this paper is going to stay within section eight, but a little bit further down to, please.
So the only other outstanding question from council member Riddle that I'd like to follow up on was whether automobile or petroleum-based activities such as occur within WashDOT's right-of-way might be regulated under this program, and whether we can, you know, kind of get some kind of contribution from them in delivering, you know, water quality protection. And the, I spoke about this with the consultant team. Their advice to me was, no, the permit is pretty clear that what is regulated under this, this program is businesses and sites, and WashDOT and their right-of-way don't fit either of those definitions. They, there are, and, you know, Paul actually made a great point when we were talking about this yesterday. There are different permits that apply to different activities, and WashDOT isn't completely off the hook for the runoff that comes from their highways. They have their own NPDES permit. As I mentioned, they also shift as much of that responsibility onto local governments. They have a state law that does that with drainage structures, the non-limited access facilities. But, yeah, as to this kind of narrowly defined, you know, what applies, WashDOT does not check the laws.
Darn.
Yeah.
I think we've all, well, many of us have been talking about egregious challenges with stormwater runoff from WashDOT facilities for decades. So anyway, not to go on the pitch.
So council member Bodie's questions that were unresolved as of the last meeting. Looks like there was just one, and that was your resource demand question. Once we identify how many sites are going to be on our inventory, how that relates to the number of inspection per year, what does that mean? Or the resources required to run the program? And so we've been given a resource demand estimate, you know, broken down in, you know, city staff-based resourcing approach or a consultant-based, contractor-based resourcing approach. I'm going to give you the contractor-based figures here, because that's the conservative, has the most conservative assumptions that, yeah, that are part of this estimated process. And the average, the average consulting cost demand, that's in this estimate, is about $50,000 per year. The sites, you know, that breaks down into, I don't have time to go through this line by line, but the inspections themselves are anticipated to take about four hours per site during this initial round of inspections. We assume that it's kind of unique, because this is another reason, this is probably a conservative, you know, my number is there is more interaction with these businesses required at the first, the first time that it introduces the program. That will be, you know, upon going basis. So there's an assumption that, you know, baked into that number, that you're both appearing, engaging with them directly to provide them that education of what best management practices are required, and following up a short time later to ensure they, you know, get it. Only one of those are required, you know, that's the basis. There's an, there's an assumption in here about the level of effort to update the inventory annually, which is about two weeks' time. There's an assumption that one enforcement action, which, you know, either one is kind of a time-consuming activity. They have 24 hours for that, which I think is realistic. But those are the, those are the main buckets, I think, of work that the program requires. It's based on, there's another, I'd say, conservative assumption represented here, which is that this inventory may actually increase if business activity, you know, improves the post-pollination part. Economic recovery continues. So there are lots of, lots of layers of, you know, it's a safe assumptions made in here. And, but it is our first, you know, this is an estimate of a program that no phase two permittee has undertaken yet. So like the inventory, I think it's subject to some, you know, world trial and error, seeing what it takes. But this is, in budget discussions, this is what we've included in our forecast, is about that number, you know, in for the next five years.
Council member Riddle, do you have a question?
I do, I just was curious, if we do this in-house, what, who would do these inspections? What department would we be coming out of, planning?
In the, no, I think it was Public Works.
Public Works, okay.
But I only brought their estimating spreadsheet for the contractor-based program. The, I believe it was mostly stormwater, it would physically be a position like mine. The, I believe it was mostly the stormwater. It would basically be a position like mine. And the, I think the thinking there, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, is that there's enough technical material here and related discussion that's going to happen between inspector and site owner that you have to have a technical expert on hand doing this work.
Yeah, I, I think if I can add, Phase Ones have been doing this, Phase One ETS committees have been doing this. And they tried different things like other inspectors that are going there to do the stand-out stormwater training. And they found that it doesn't work very well. It really does take the right eye and expertise, perhaps from a stormwater person to, to and they found that it's, because it's collaborative and cooperative, it's, it's better to have a conversation with somebody that could actually work through a problem, somebody.
And then a quick follow-up question. Again, if we were to do it in-house or, or through a consultant, is there like a suggested time during the year to do it? Or would we space the inspections out throughout the year? Just kind of thinking about that staffing flow and demand.
Seasonally dependent or do you?
It is, it is not. It, I think it just, what makes the most sense in your resource availability and so on. There might be an argument that you do it when it's raining and you might see something. That's the only, the only other suggestion that might be in there. But there's no, there's no directed right time to go or wrong.
Okay. So during the spring when it rains really hard? Thank you.
Please do.
So let's see, I'll move on to the next question. It looks like so Councilmember Lebo had asked about the educational process for site owners, like is that provided upfront before these inspections begin or like during the inspection? And, and I answered the question, but I wanted to kind of follow up and clarify because I, I mentioned that my, my response during council meeting was that, that, that educational material, that instructions provided as part of this initial outreach. Just to kind of clarify, as we've been thinking through further, how this educational process is going to look. It's, it's meant to have these, these two touches at the, at the front end before what you might think of like the regulation of the site really begin. So we're planning to start with a sort of broad-based introductory letter and may or may not include like a public event, you know, heels of that for all of the site owners on the inventory. Not getting terribly specific about what sort of BMEs will be required at each site because that's kind of to be determined validated onsite. But it may, that initial mailing may include BMEs that are frequently associated with the types of activities associated with that business, just as a, you know, high-level expectation setting effort. And then the second touch with that site owner would be this direct engagement prior to their first inspection. You know, we would schedule an appointment with them to, you know, some, like, take a look at, you know, what is actually happening, what activity is being conducted and then what investment management practice makes sense, you know, based on that. It would be, you know, if that's the year that they're supposed to be inspected, there would be, say, a follow-up, you know, some several ones down the line if they had an opportunity to so that, that's the, that's the clarification I want to offer there.
There, before you go, John, did that satisfy your question?
I'm good. Thank you for that clarification. That sounds like a very good process of engagement with the businesses.
All right. So looking at the inventory, do you have a feel for what fraction of the sites already need to do some level of pollution management planning? And what fraction of sites, this would be brand new to them, it seems like education would be especially valuable for sites that haven't had to do this sort of thing before.
I mean, honestly, I don't know. If they are, if they are on this list, I I have assumed that that means they're not already regulated elsewhere, although the ordinance language does allow for some adjustment of the department's approach to regulating the site based on whether they are, they are already regulated by another entity, ETS program. So yeah, that's very like individual situation-specific. I guess it's hard to, hard to say what type of like, there may be a site, I'll just, you know, one that I'm familiar with is there may be a site that is some already being, has a permitted stormwater management facility, and we have inspectors that are required to visit that site annually to ensure that that facility is some, is operating properly. But there may, even in that case, there could still be other activity happening on site that that generates a higher, you know, pollution load at you know, that, that facility, that there's some evidence on site that that facility is not designed to manage, you know, for its own BMP. It's I just started getting into the speculation I said I shouldn't get into, so I should probably stop there. But this is a, a example.
All the questions?
Actually, I, I didn't realize that that was actually at the end of my list of items that I believe were, were outstanding as of the last meeting. Unless any of you recall any that were on your mind and you wanted to talk about, or I guess I would just open it up to you and ask if you have any other questions about the ordinance or materials sent you over there this week.
Do you want, we have a few extra minutes here. Is Spencer Castle?
Thank you. And I'd like to follow up on Councilmember Riddle's question or Councilmember Riddle's question about the budget requirements here. And just to make that, that actually that should be part of the introduction to this ordinance. The cover sheet. That section where it says options and results. It didn't
Oh, I see.
Have a budget implication. Or is it fiscal implications that are not there? Yes. So, so if we could just have that, you know, for future meetings. And I, I guess I'm, I'm still wrapping my head around this a little bit. And I want to just clarify again, a question I asked earlier because I, I think I may not have got it quite right. So if a business, say a construction business, they're headquartered in the city of Lake Forest Park, and they have a building site, and they, and they, they contract to build something or, or to model something. When you inspect them, you're going to their offices and there's nothing there, right? The stormwater, the contacts with stormwater. But there is where they're doing their work on a, on a site somewhere in Lake Forest Park. Do you have to go, go inspect that? Or is that just, that's covered under some other kind of permitting?
I'll let you speak first.
Yeah, there's a, so what's expected is, is that this is a business site inspection. And so if they're doing work elsewhere in the city, and it happens to be construction, there's actually a different program. And, and so, and, and it's, there's nothing that indicates that you follow them around to whatever they're doing, when, where, or they're doing their stuff. It, it is intended to be source control, which is really focused on things like keeping con, stormwater contact away from things that are including and don't wash stuff off. That's basically the, the kinds of things that really happen is, is that you know, stormwater falling out dumpsters, people washing things down the drain, people washing equipment, storing equipment that has pollution that gets washed away when rain falls on it.
Right.
That's, that's really kind of, but it's always, it's really focused on the, the way the program's set up is focused, it's as business sites.
So if there's a construction company that stores a lot of big trucks at the, in a yard at their site, and they wash them right there, then that is what you're looking at.
So if they have an office and go do stuff, it'll probably get no contact. They have a truck there that they wash off, then it's a source control.
Got it. Got it. Thank you. That helps a lot.
I'd like to ask about the refers. So let's say there's a construction company that's headquartered in, say, Shoreline, and they're building some houses in Lake Forest Park. But where they're building the houses, that's where the pollution may very well occur. And so since their business is headquartered in Shoreline, how would that be monitored?
So the, the, in this scenario, construction is occurring in the city.
Yeah, in Lake Forest Park.
In that case, they would have obtained a permit, likely if the, what they're doing exceeds the thresholds for obtaining a permit, to conduct that and regulate it under like those, those permitting requirements, which have their own, you know, stormwater you know, claimed standards. And so it, it is regulated, just not under source control. It's a, and it is already regulated. And this, this is
So that comes from our, so Calvin's, that Calvin's, we are still fencing, he's going to you know, all of those, it's required filtering within storm so if you have a storm drain facility that system, so there are requirements that they have to meet to satisfy the condition which you get specs that needs that onsite.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that.
Question. Thoughts, comments? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. Since we have a little bit of extra time, I just wanted to mention to all of you, my colleagues, that we have a community senior project engineer who is commenting on all of stormwater and runoff implications of the Sound Transit Construction 22. And I will forward his detailed questions and comments, but there are financial implications for us in their use of existing stormwater facilities. If, if we're responsible for DOT, the maintenance of DOT stormwater facilities and also macaulay-reef implications. So, again, they seem very thoughtful to me. I'm not an engineer, but he is employed by Pace Engineering as a senior engineer. So I will share those with you. I'm only raising it because we seem to have a little extra time here. And we raised the issue of DOT. So the implications for find their potential financial implications for us, it seems, if we have to maintain those facilities, which may be impacted.
Thank you, Customer Riddle.
Thank you. Just double-checking that there's a method for residents or, or community members to flag a concern and bring it up with the public works? Is that something that we already have, you know, we could use our current report this form for? And then you would do a special investigation of that site? Is that how that would normally work?
Yeah, absolutely. We have, there's any number ways those reports reach us. Sometimes people know to contact DPW directly. There's a, there's a report is still hotline on the city website. Sometimes it comes to our front desk and they know to get that information to DPW. Yes, I would say those, those incidents are pretty well when, when the information is shared with the city, it gets to where it needs to in DPW. And yeah, there's a, there's a response.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I think with that, if there are no further questions, I think you both, thank you Paul for joining us. Thank you, Mr. Silver, for another excellent conversation. And we are adjourned. We'll be moving upstairs.